Welcome. The November 19, 2024 organizational meeting is now called to order. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the Kids at Hope Treasure Hunter's Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children in you. I believe all children capable of success, no exceptions.
We will now have our folks take their oath of office. The St. Lucie County Clerk of the Circuit Court, Michelle Miller, will now administer the oath of office to our newly elected constitutional officer, Ms. Teresa Aronson, residing in District 2, followed by Judge Shanique Maynard, who will administer the oath to our re-elected constitutional officer, Mrs. Jennifer Richardson, residing in District 4.
I state your name.
I, Teresa Aronson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm
That I will support, protect, and defend
That I will support, protect, and defend
The Constitution and government of the United States
The Constitution and government of the United States
And of the state of Florida
And of the state of Florida
That I am duly qualified
That I am duly qualified
To hold office
To hold office
Under the Constitution of the state
Under the Constitution of the state
And that I will well
And that I will well
And faithfully perform
And faithfully perform
The duties of St. Lucie County School Board Member The duties of St. Lucie County
St. Lucie County School Board Member
On which I am now about to enter
On which I am now about to enter
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And while we move for pictures, we want to make sure we thank everyone that came And once again, Shanique Maynard will administer the oath of office to our re-elected constitutional officer, Mrs. Jennifer Richardson, residing in District 4.
Thank you. And before we start, I, um, would, um, can somebody go out there and get my son for me, please? Where is he? Oh, I'm sorry, Phillip, I didn't see you. We can't have this without my son.
Can't do it without your baby. I hear you.
We can't do it without my baby. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, buddy, I didn't see you.
I hear you. Ms. Richardson, if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I
I
Please state your name.
Jennifer Richardson.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
Or affirm
Or affirm
That I will support, protect, and defend
That I will support, protect, and defend
The Constitution and government
The Constitution and government
Of the United States
Of the United States
And of the state of Florida
And of the state of Florida
That I am duly qualified
That I am duly qualified
To hold office
To hold office
Under the Constitution of the state
Under the Constitution of the state
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
Perform the duties
Perform the duties
Of a St. Lucie County School Board Member
Of a St. Lucie County School Board Member
On which I am now about to enter
On which I am now about to enter
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Ms. Richardson, you use the microphone. Ms. Richardson asked to say a couple of words before we move forward with our meeting. We'll see the floor.
Thank you so very much. Thank you. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here today. I would like to thank Judge Maynard for officiating my swearing-in ceremony tonight. Thank you so very much. To my extraordinary volunteers who are here today and those who have supported me throughout this journey, thank you. I'm just moving all over the place. While I cannot name every single individual who has contributed to my campaign, I want to express my deepest gratitude to those present in this room. Please know I see your faces, each and every one of you. Your face represents something far greater than just individual efforts. You were the heart and soul of my campaign. Each of you sitting here knows the countless hours you have dedicated, the personal sacrifices you have made, and the passion you have brought to our shared vision. You are the volunteers who showed up when it mattered most, when the path seemed challenging. Thank you for your support and unwavering commitment. Thank you, not just with words, but with the deepest respect and admiration for your incredible support. To my children, Christopher, Phillip, and Bethany, I thank you. This is why I do this, for our children, for my children. Phillip, you are my sounding board. You say the hard things that I do not want to hear, but what I need to hear. You hold me accountable to all the things that I have taught you, and now you give it back to me when I need it the most. Thank you, and I love you very much. Bethany Rae Amaraya, a daughter promised of God, thank you for being my voice of reason, for speaking truth and life to me, for helping me see things from a different perspective, for never letting me lose hope, for encouraging me when I needed it the most. Thank you for helping me to find just the right places for my signs, for the holes we dug or tried to. Thank you for being my greatest cheerleader. Daughters are amazing, aren't they? Yeah, they are. Bethany, I love you very much. To our community, thank you for your trust. Your voice is your power, and you used it beautifully. I'm honored to serve you again. Together, our voice will inspire change. Thank you.
As, uh, thank you, Mrs. Richardson. Once again, congratulations. Ms. Aronson, would you like to say a few words before we move on?
I too want to thank my supporters, but in the interest of time, I'll forego words.
Okay. All right, so we'll wait for Mrs. Richardson to take her place on the dais, and then we will move on forward. Okay, now is the part of the program where we open nominations for the chair. Do I hear any nominations?
Yes, sir. Uh, Dr. Donna Mills.
Dr. Donna Mills.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any other nominations? Okay, Dr. Donna Mills, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Congratulations to our new board chair, Dr. Donna Mills.
Thank you for the nomination, as well as the vote, fellow board members. Our next item of business is our election for our vice chair nominations. May we have a nomination, please?
Madam Chair, I nominate Mr. Ingersoll, please.
I'll second.
Okay.
Um, can we have a discussion on that?
I guess we can have a second nomination if you want to put one out on the
Um, no, not necessarily a second nomination, but when I came on this board, Mrs. Hawley was the chairperson. Then it went to, uh, Dr. Mills, then it went to Mr. Ingersoll, and then Ms. Hawley again. I've been on, on the, on the board for five years. This, this is going on my fifth year, and I think it's time that I get the, um, the chance to be vice chair. So I'm saying that we should go around in a, in, in, in a, I guess, circle, you know, and I think it's my time. Thank you.
That is not a second nomination, or is it?
I can't nominate myself. I, can I nominate me?
Yes, you can nominate.
Okay, I nominate Jennifer Richardson.
Okay. We have two nominations on the floor, so we will first go with the first nomination, which is Mr. Troy Ingersoll for Vice President, uh, Vice Chair rather. So, pending the outcome, we will go to the second nominate, nominee. Board members, I need a motion and a second.
A motion to elect Mr. Ingersoll as the Vice Chair.
Uh, all in favor?
Did we get a second?
I seconded.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Hawley, a second by, uh, Ms. Aronson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries for one. Congratulations, Mr. Ingersoll, Vice Chairman. We will now go to our appointment of members to committees. The next business, uh, item on our agenda. Board members, you have a list of committees in front of you. You've served on those committees through the year. I would suggest that each continue to serve on our previous committees unless there is a committee you no longer wish to serve on. This would be the time to inform me at this time.
Uh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Dr. Mills, um, I thought that there was a, um, that you wanted to serve on the Children's Services Council. No? Are you changing your mind about that?
No, I'm okay with that.
Pardon me?
No, ma'am, I don't want to serve.
Okay, all right.
All right, board members, um,
Hold on, I do have a question. Mrs. Aronson, do you still serve on the Land Acquisition, Land Acquisition Committee?
I do.
Can both of us serve on it even though we represent different organizations? I was just looking at it, and I was thinking of the meetings that I go to that
You can, but of course you can't talk about school board business at those meetings.
Okay, nope, no big deal.
Just, um, in the interest of disclosure, I also serve on the Children's Services, or the Early Learning Coalition with Dr. Donna Mills, and we did have that discussion as, as long as we agreed not to talk about school board business.
Yes. Okay, Ms. Aronson, could you, hopefully you had a chance to go over Mr. Kelly's, uh, different committees, and I'm hoping that you would agree to serve on the same this year.
Madam Chair, I did, and, and yes, I would agree to serve on the same.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. So we need a thumbs up for consensus. We do not have to take a vote for this. Uh, can I get a thumbs up, everyone?
I, I do have a question. The alternate to be determined, do we need to fill that out now?
Uh, that is Ms. Aronson.
Oh, that is her?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That was, uh, Mr. Kelly's. Okay, we will move on to our
I, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. What was the question?
Uh, he wanted to, let me ask you a question, Mr. Ingersoll.
Oh, okay, no, no, it was the alternate to be determined. That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, and Ms. Aronson is going to take that up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, board, for, um, continuing on your committees. At this time, we will go to our next item of business. It is the date and time and place of regular board meetings. Currently, our regular board meeting is held once a month on every second Tuesday at 5:00 PM in the boardroom, and the board workshop is held every fourth Tuesday at 9:00 AM monthly in the boardroom. I will now call for a motion and a second to approve the board's annual meeting schedule of one regular business meeting on the second Tuesday of each month at 5:00, and one work session on the fourth Tuesday of each month at 9:00 in the boardroom. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Ms. Hawley and second by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One.
Okay. Motion carries for one. Okay. We have conducted all of our business scheduled for the organizational meeting. Organizational meeting is adjourned. Dr. Prince?
All right. I'm using my hand gavel. Uh, I call the St. Lucie School Board Leasing Corporation Annual Membership Meeting to order with all members present, including Mrs. Debbie Hawley, Mr. Troy Ingersoll, Dr. Donna Mills, Mrs. Jennifer Richardson, and Ms. Teresa Aronson. All five of the St. Lucie County School Board Members shall serve as the sole and ex-officio members of the St. Lucie School Board Leasing Corporation. I call for a motion and second to approve the appointment of the members of the School Board of St. Lucie County as the ex-officio Board of Directors of the St. Lucie School Board Leasing Corporation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carry. The St. Lucie School Board Leasing Corporation Annual Membership Meeting is adjourned. Hand gavel. I call the St. Lucie School Board Leasing Corporation Board of Directors Meeting to order. I call for a motion and second to name the Chairman of the School Board of St. Lucie County as the ex-officio Chairman of the Board of Directors of the St. Lucie School Board Leasing Corporation, and Vice Chairman of the School Board of St. Lucie County as the ex-officio Vice Chairman of the Board of Directors of the Corporation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Uh, let's see. I call for a motion and second to name the Chairman of the Board of Directors as the ex-officio President of the Corporation, the Vice Chairman of the Board of Directors as the ex-officio Vice President of the Corporation, and the Secretary of the School Board of St. Lucie County as the ex-officio Secretary-Treasurer of the Corporation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. The St. Lucie School Board Leasing Corporation Board of Directors Meeting is adjourned.
Okay, at this time, we open up our regular meeting, November the 19th, St. Lucie County School Board. Welcome to all of you that are out there in the audience tonight. I'm sure we have several parents because we do have some, a special group here that will be doing a presentation for us. Uh, we will, at this time, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Directly after will be the Kids at Hope Treasure Hunter Pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have with us tonight Samuel S. Gaines Academy of Emergent Technology Student Performance. We have Mr. Justin Reed that will be leading in the presentation, and the principal of that school is Principal Keith Davis. Principal Keith Davis, are you here this evening? Amen. Would you please stand? I say amen because he's done a fantastic job at Sam Gaines. And Mr. Keith Davis, we thank you for your, uh, sharing your gifts with us, with St. Lucie County School Board, and we're ready for the presentation, please. Again, we thank you, Mr. Reed, for sharing your talents, gifts, and abilities with St. Lucie County Public Schools. Let's put our hands together one more time for these fine young people. If we have any parents in the audience, would you please stand now? We'd like to recognize you. Wow, well, we do have one parent here.
There's two or three over there to the right.
Any other ones? Oh, now you're standing, okay. We thank you because we could not do this without you and us working together. It takes a village to raise a child. So thank you so much for helping the young people get here this evening. Okay, at this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. We will open and conduct the public hearing to receive comments on the proposed approval of amendments to school board policy, general education development, GED, test number 5465. Following, following the public hearing, we will have our superintendent make a recommendation as to the adoption of the same. Is there anyone out in the audience that would like to comment? Okay, see and none. Superintendent?
I recommend the board adopt the proposed amendments to school board policy number 5465, general education
five, four, six, five, General Education Development, GED, tests.
Superintendent has made a recommendation that we adopt the same. Motion, please.
Second.
So moved by Ms. Holly, second by Mr. Ingersoll. Any discussion board members on this? Seeing there's no discussion on this amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We will now close our public hearing. Special order of business, Dr. Prince?
Yes, I request item seven point one. That is our report from our youth advisory committee from Alexia Morgan being moved up first. She has a very important appointment to get to with discretion. Madam Chair?
Okay, Ms. Morgan, would you please come to the podium at this time?
Even got her uniform on, she's ready to go.
And welcome.
She's got someplace to be.
So good evening, everyone, members of the board, Dr. Prince, the new chairperson, Dr. Mills. My name is Alexia Morgan, and I'm the chairperson of the Youth Advisory Council. Thank you. I'm here to present an overview of the October 28th meeting. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Aronson and Doc, Ms. Richardson for their reelection and election today. Congratulations to you both. In our Youth Advisory Council meeting, after introductions and the approval of the meeting agenda in previous minutes, council members shared updates on school activities and student concerns. These updates highlighted both successes, such as well-attended events, and challenges like attendance issues, scheduling conflicts, and resource limitations. Everyone is currently busy with homecoming events, fall festivals, and preparing for midterms. It's a good season, we have lots of fun events planned, all schools, it's really fun. The primary focus of this meeting was a discussion of the need for accessible tutoring programs to support students in meeting academic requirements, particularly in light of increased academic pressures. Members discussed potential formats, including both in-person and virtual formats, and emphasized the importance of having qualified tutors. Key considerations included addressing privacy concerns, ensuring equitable access, and identifying ways to engage students who may be reluctant to seek help. While this was a discussion rather than a plan, it underscored the council's commitment to identifying actionable solutions to meet these needs. Looking ahead, we will continue gathering input from principals, student organizations, and others to refine our understanding on how best to address these challenges. The meeting adjourned at 4:34 PM. I would like to thank you all for your ongoing support and have a happy Thanksgiving break, everyone. And also, thank you for letting me wear my soccer uniform today. We're playing Jensen Beach, so wish us luck, it's against the whole district this one.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
And thank you, Ms. Morgan, for serving as the president of the Youth Advisory Council and making the time to come to the board meeting. Okay, so now we're going to go to special thanks and recognition, as well as our star.
Yes, special orders of business. We do have Mr. O'Leary, who's going to come up real briefly. Just wanted to also mention Mr. Freeland, our union president. He will be unable to speak tonight as well because he's got a membership meeting that happens tonight as well. But we've got a great update for the public. Many of our students with perfect scores, pay attention because one of these high schools could be the one you go to in the future. So, Mr. O'Leary?
Good evening, Board Chair, esteemed board members, Superintendent Dr. Prince, guests, and colleagues. It is my privilege to introduce tonight's construction update, presentation for our new Legacy High School, as well as our Fort Pierce Westwood High School rebuild. As many of you are aware, these projects represent our collective commitment to creating state-of-the-art learning environments for our students and community. I am pleased to report significant milestones have been achieved over the last several months, and we are making steady progress towards the scheduled openings of both schools. These updates demonstrate the dedication of our teams, contractors, and partners adhering to the rigorous timeline and quality standards. Our St. Lucy facilities team, led by our senior project manager on this job, Matthew Weber, our building code department doing the inspections, led by Bob Massa, along with our partners in the construction, Core Remnant, continually are working on accountability measures to ensure all trade subcontractors remain aligned to the timeline and budget that we have prepared. We are excited about the progress and look forward to continued transformations of these facilities and spaces, and we know it will inspire generations to come. Tonight, we have with us our new Legacy High School principal, Mr. Todd Smith, along with his assistant principal, Ms. Emerson, and in addition, our proud principal of Fort Pierce Westwood, David Alfonso, who will be providing you with tonight's updates. At this time, I'm going to call up Mr. Todd Smith.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mills, school board members, Superintendent Prince. Tonight, we're going to walk you through Legacy High School, started as a dream, a field of dreams. We're going to walk you through the four stages, the four categories of the construction process, the mass grading, foundations, structure, and building erection. But more importantly, we're going to take this theory and we're going to apply it. The way we're going to apply it is through visuals, through a video, we're going to present a video, then talk to you about the culmination of the project as we come together and as we move forward for August of 2025. So we'll start the video.
Behind me is what is Building One. Building One is sectioned into three separate buildings, Building One A, Building One B, and One C. Building One A and One C are the academic wings, so those host our classrooms in traditional pods, similar to Treasure Coast High School and Corpus Central. They have six classrooms in each, and what's really exciting is the finishings are almost done in there. So we have bathroom tile, we have teacher walls that are Columbia blue. Building One B is the administrative offices, where you'll see the school counselors, our ESC department, administration. And Building Three, that shorter part, is where our career technical education programs will be. That includes exercise science, global logistics, health science, our dental program, hospitality and tourism, and biomedical. So those classrooms are actually receiving the framing and the beginning of the drywall. Behind it is the rest of Building Three, that includes the performing arts wing and the auditorium. Those now are just getting that concrete floor put in, and that's an extensive process that the construction crew here goes through. It's been really wonderful to see as they, you know, bring in the dirt and even it out, and then put down that framing, and then pour the concrete. And this building to my left is where the cafeteria and gym are, so that's mostly framed and awaiting drywall.
Once again, good evening and welcome to Legacy High School. I've had the honor to be a principal for 15 years, but I've never had an agenda where we talked about construction and construction updates. So I'm going to defer to my team out there at Legacy on Cross Town, Mr. Dan Sell. He's a works, he's a general superintendent for Core Construction, Brandon Noble and Brian Garcia from Remnant Construction, Matthew Weber from St. Lucy Public Schools, and Dan, sorry, Bob Massa. So if I fail this presentation, you get to talk to those five individuals I aforementioned to address them to make sure that we hold them accountable. So as we move forward here, what we're going to talk about here is we're talking an overall. And the most important part about this is this is a March 2024. In March of 2024, Crosstown Parkway was a dream. You can see the lot, the arrow pointing there, that arrow will take you in a westerly direction, so you're moving back towards a tradition and tradition Parkway. As you look at this, Building One was just erected, the walls were there. That is Building One C. One B, we do not have Building, the rest of Building One B up there, or Building One A. Building Two, it goes back to it, that's just the foundation. Building Three, that's the mass grading. If you've got a student parking lot, the student parking lot is just preparation, so that's what's called binding. What they have there is they just mix the sand and the oil together to put that down there. And as you look at the picture again, that's Legacy Entrance. But more importantly, you look out there, we have about nine trailers there at that time, and about eight cars in the parking lot. One of them's mine, so you can just imagine how much construction is being done if I'm in the parking lot. And we move forward, as we move forwards, we look at November 1st, again, Crosstown Parkway and a westerly division, direction, I'm sorry, it's almost complete. We're looking to anticipate and hopefully that'll be finished by February of 2025, so our employees can move in there and start working on, continue the construction phase. Again, Building One is complete, 100% complete with that. What I mean by that, we have the first coat of paint on that, we have the roof in, it's all dried in, they're working on the interior fixtures there, hanging the drywall and painting that. Building Two, Building Three, Building Two is that's our gymnasium, couple of the cafeteria. Building Three is our CTE wing, performing arts wing, and our auditorium. You look at the student parking lot, that's the first lift of asphalt's in there. As you look at the fields, the fields again are being prepped, will start the fields in January of 2025, and the Legacy Entrance there. As you look at this picture, now we're about 25 trailers, equipment trailers in there. On any given day, we have upwards of 180 individuals working there on the site, 20 to 25 vendors are participating in that. And this shows us our field of dreams, June of 20, 2023. I think Dr. Prince had just announced me as the principal of Legacy High School that week or right before that, and that's what we're presented with. And the found, in this picture, you can actually see the foundation for Building One, Building Two, and Three, or the site work, I should say. Again, move forward to March of '24, that's the first, an overall picture we showed you a minute ago, and Building One's starting there, the laydown for the tilt walls is there also. Move forward, November 1st, 2024. As you look at this aerial view, we have Crosstown Parkway, western, westerly direction paved. That first parking lot is actually the faculty and staff parking lot, coupled with the bus loop, then you see all the positions of our buildings, Buildings One, Two, and Building Three. If you look at this, now, these are our school colors. We have called out there, in the exterior color, it's called powder blue, but it's actually a Columbia blue. The darker gray is a Westchester gray, and then you have gray and obviously white. It's a unique design, unique to Legacy High School, and we're really excited about the colors can be selected there. Top row, middle picture, it's just another aerial view of our school, coupled with the one to the right of that. But as you move down, lower level picture there, lower left-hand corner, you have an overall picture of the school, but that building on the back, that's actually Building Five, that is the chiller plant, the ice plant, and that's what's going to generate our AC for the school. A front, a front picture of Legacy High School, and then again, the backside of the chiller plant. As you look in, this is talking, we're talking about, you know, building drying, you look at right now, the first picture up in the right, I'm sorry, the left, we have the framing going in there, you have some drywall in there, and the center picture, that's one we're most proud of, you can go to Sherwin-Williams, Sherwin-Williams has 6,000 paint colors. Now they have 6,001 because that official color right now is St. Lucy Public Schools' custom Columbia blue. The picture to the right is actually the media center. So really excited about the media center and the storefront windows we have there. On the left-hand side, you have a staff, a student, sorry, student bathroom in the middle, that's our classroom, and that pod area, you have six classrooms, and then to the right of that picture, we have some mechanical work. Remaining construction, again, we're looking at the third bullet point there, our third part, interior finishes, finishes, so we're moving forward with that. Athletic fields commence in, in January 25, landscape and hardscape, think of your trees, think of your grass, and think about your fencing. I'm going to turn over to Ms. Emerson, because we're going to take the presentation, the construction, and talk about what academic programs are going to offer.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Mills, school board members, Superintendent Dr. Prince, families, colleagues, and our future Lions. We are really excited to share the work that we've done with our curriculum programs, and of course, in line with St. Lucy County's mission, our goal will be graduation. So to start, of course, is our core programs. With that, we'll offer honors, regular classroom, classes, focus on opportunities for our ESC and English language learners, as well as offer advanced coursework with dual enrollment, College Board Advanced Placement, and Cambridge ACE Diploma Program. In addition to that, we will have your general electives. For instance, in physical education, we would have team sports, weightlifting, in performing arts, band, drama, choir, dance, and then then fine arts, things like drawing, creative photography. As far as for our career technical academies, students will be able to earn certifications and learn vital content in the following programs. We're going to offer biomedical science, and with that, students will learn about human body systems, medicine, and medical interventions. We will have one of three dental assistant programs in the state of Florida, where students will learn how to learn about dental aid and then even running a dental office. Exercise science, they'll learn about occupational and physical therapy. Global logistics, where they'll learn about the global supply chain, industry safety principles, and transportation logistics. Health science, which is offered at many of our high schools, they will learn about the human body systems and healthcare careers. And then our hospitality and tourism program, which will have, think of reservation systems, learning about travel, and all those career opportunities that's available in that industry. Our curriculum guide will be available for our students in early 2025, where we'll be so excited to start welcoming our Lions to our campus. Mr. Smith?
This is just a quick overview, another diagram of what we're moving forward through, just again resonate, August 2025, opening day. Mr. O'Leary? And I'll bring up Mr. Alfonso from Westwood High School.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mills, school board members, and Superintendent Prince. My name's Dave Alfonso, I'm the proud principal of Fort Pierce Westwood, and we are so excited to share with you our, our rebuild. So I just want to get started real quick. Here we go. So, very similar, I'm not going to repeat everything because what's really unique about what we're doing here in St. Lucy County is that these are two identical high schools. So Legacy and Fort Pierce Westwood Academy will be the same, same structure, same everything, and it's really just been great. Our contractors, and I just want to make sure that we give a big thank you to Core Remnant, they have just done a phenomenal job. I also want to shout out Terrence O'Leary, Matt Weber, also Mr. Smith and Ms. Emerson, because the thing that's unique about Fort Pierce Westwood Academy is that we're, we're in business. We're still at the old campus, looking north to see this beautiful new campus that's there, and we have so many people that are helping us to where we can still provide a wonderful education for our students and get this new school going. So I do want to share with you, I believe we have a video that's going to be coming up real soon. Just click it.
Oh my God, it feels amazing. To be exact, all the students yesterday, when they put the first wall up, it was just a buzz throughout the whole school because they were able to see it from our courtyard.
To start off with, we prep the ground for the building, dig the footings, get those installed, which these walls will be setting on, and then we go ahead and we stand the panels. The brown things that you see that's attached to these panels are actually braces, so as you can see, as we stand panels, we kick the braces, and that's what holds the walls up until the steel is installed.
The construction company couldn't be better. They have just really worked and made sure that all of our needs are met. What's nice about it is that when we're dealing with a school, because, because Westwood, the existing facility right now, has kind of come to the end of its life. And so whenever something happens, I always tell the kids, look north, look north, and from our school, they can see this beautiful, brand-new building coming up, and it just gets them excited and motivated to do their best, so that when we say Westwood on top, we mean it.
We're looking at about 28 working days for all the panels to be erected. This building here will be erected in about another seven working days, it'll be all stood.
And this is what, about 150 panels?
154 panels in this, this building.
The benefits of build wall construction allows us to put the structure up quickly, so we're allowed
so we're allowed to, once we have it dried and we have a roof on, we have windows, we can move inside and begin interiors. Which, you know, at these buildings, in the next 28 days, we'll have the building stood up, we'll start landing all the steel, it's all here on site, we'll roof it, and then we move into interiors. So we're on schedule, we're under budget, and we're heading towards the December opening for the school.
The teachers are so excited, so they also, I give them the opportunity to take a look at what type of colors are we going to use? What are we going to put in their classrooms, even down to the tiles where we can actually pick? Everybody has a say in it. And now, as we get closer and the walls are coming up, we're going to actually bring the students in. And so our Ag Mechanic program and some of our vocational programs, even our robotics, because they do, they work with CAD and think they're going to be able to learn about how a school goes up and what, with experts. It's incredible.
Being from this community, this is a huge opportunity to give back to this community and to make sure that the North End of the county has all of the resources that the South End has as well. I think this is really going to be a highlight in the history of Fort Pierce and San Lucie County schools.
Well, I'm just going to say this to the community. It's here. A lot of people said, "Oh, it's never going to happen." It's happening, it's here, the walls are up. The best is coming to Fort Pierce.
And I do mean the best is coming to Fort Pierce. And Fort Pierce deserves it. Let me just show you real quick, when we come to Fort Pierce Westwood Academy, where we started off. We're very unique in the fact that we actually, the property that Fort Pierce Westwood Academy sits on is immense. So we're able to do the construction literally in the front of the school, and we still have our old school right there. And you can kind of see that right there on that picture. That picture was taken in November 27th of '23. As you can see right there. Then, on March 18th of '24, they cleared the land. It was quite amazing, but now, because we were an existing school, we actually had a barn, our Ag program was there, so we had to move all the cows, the pigs, the barn. We created a temporary barn. We moved our JROTC program. As a principal, I learned about soil samples, we had to move gopher tortoises. There were so many things that we had to do on this one, but boy, did we do it. And as you can see, we were able to clear the land, and that was March 18th. Moving along in the progression, here we are, November 7th of '24, and boy, the walls came up. And I've got to tell you all, I did not know about tilt wall construction. I can talk to you about English and math, but when it comes to this, now, I can tell you, that is the most impressive thing, literally. In 28 days, the entire exterior walls of all the school and the interior walls will be up. If you noticed in the video, they had it all set, they then bring in the cranes, they tilt it up, it's quite impressive. And the kids, it's great, because seriously, it's so fast. And our construction company, that is literally on budget and on time, they're able to do this every single day. Our kids come in, they're like, "Oh, Mr. Alfonso, we just saw a new wing come up." We just saw, right now, they just got the gem. It's amazing. And so every day, we're seeing this progress. And it's just, I'm just happy to share that with you. These are some of the key milestones that we've achieved. So as you can see, we're already doing our, Building 1 is up, Building 2 is getting there, we're almost set when it comes to that. If you look at Building 3, they're going to be getting everything set to get that set. So really, the most important thing, and I won't read all of this to you, but the thing that you have to realize is that we literally will have everything exterior-wise so that they can then, and I'll show you on these pictures coming up here, so that we can then go and put on the roof. So the next stage, and this is happening as we speak, the, if you look at the bottom right corner, that's called a kite. I had no clue, doesn't really look like a kite, but what it is, is that's actually the roof that they connect the buildings with. And so they do all of the welding on the ground, right? And the neat thing is, Fort Pierce Westwood Academy alumni are the welders. Fort Pierce residents and residents of St. Lucie County are the contractors that are working on this. So that's just neat, that our money is going back here to our community. But they will then take that with this huge crane, and they fly it over, that's the kite, and they put it there, and they connect it to the buildings, and then we get our roof. So eventually, we will have it, probably by January, we're going to be all dried in, they'll have the roof set, they'll put the windows in, and then they start working inside the building. Again, here's some of the other pictures that you can go and take a look at, of kind of where we are. That, if you look at the far left bottom, that's going to be in our athletic fields. You're saying, geez, what's that little building? But that's going to be where they're going to have the restroom, concession stands, and everything for our fields. And by the way, we are going to be receiving our fields literally in two weeks. So our soccer team will be actually using our fields, so we're excited about that. And then we also have our baseball field, which I'll show you, I believe we, let me see if I have that picture. Well, when it comes over there, I'll show you that, but the baseball field will be ready in January, and we're real excited about that. Again, these are the remaining things that we need to go and do. You can see that we're, the buildings, the walls are coming up, we have our interior finishes that we're going to be dealing with, and then of course, basically very similar to Legacy. Now, I am going to be a little shameless here because I just want to make sure that I congratulate all of our middle school students who scored a perfect score on their state test. Can we give them a big round of applause? And our eighth graders are going to be making a decision as to what high school they're going to go to. Legacy is great. But let me tell you about Fort Pierce Westwood Academy. We have some really great programs. And on December 5th, we're going to have our tractor night, and all of you are invited to come and actually see it, meet my students, meet our teachers, and really get to see that. But one of the things that we have here at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy, not only we're going to have a new building, but we're going to have seriously the best programming, because we already have it. Fort Pierce Westwood Academy already has it. And so one of our big programs that we have is our Marine Oceanographic Academy, it's MOA. This program, if you go into it, the entire thing is designed around an ACE Diploma and around working with Florida Atlantic University and Harbor Branch, so that you can get immersed working with scientists in the marine industry. It's incredible. You walk out of MOA, you will walk out with a full ACE Diploma. That is the goal. Very neat program. We also have our Ag Technology. So if you've heard of FFA, we have the best, the best FFA in the Treasure Coast, I dare say, the state of Florida. And I'm not just saying that because I'm the principal, I'm saying it because it's true. When we went to Nationals this year, we really just took in all the top honors. But you can raise cows, pigs, we have our welding program that is part of it. It is just the most incredible program that we have there. We have computer science, pharmacy technicians, robotics and engineering, and our veterinary tech. Some of the programs that we have at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy, nowhere else, not only in St. Lucie County, but on the Treasure Coast. We also offer criminal justice, culinary arts, and digital design. The interest of time, I won't go into, I can talk a dog off a meat truck, I know I always say that, but I will tell you this, when it comes to Fort Pierce Westwood Academy, there's just so much to say, because it truly is an incredible place to be. So, going back, I just want to go over this, Mr. Smith went over this with Legacy. This is ours. We will open the new school in January of 2026. And a big thank you to Legacy, because they're basically getting everything set, helping Westwood, making sure that we have, just like they will have, the best high school for our students. And there it is. Westwood Academy will be opening January 2026. Let's give a big round of applause to that. We're incredibly excited. So board members, thank you, thank you for letting me be a part of this. And seriously, on behalf of the staff and faculty and students of Fort Pierce Westwood Academy, we're thankful that we're getting this beautiful, brand-new school. Thank you.
So thank you, Mr. Alfonso, and thank you, Mr. Smith, the two principals, shamelessly plugging their schools for the future, for future high school students. Just wanted to also add that I can't say enough, first of all, thanking once again our voters for renewing our half penny sales tax for the next 10 years. Because that touches everybody in St. Lucie County north, Fort Pierce south, and the traditional east, west. Everybody deserves a first-class public education, deserves first-class facilities, and that's what we're going to provide at St. Lucie Public Schools. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to our Chief of Communications, Ms. Lydia Martin.
Thank you.
And I'd ask our board members to please move down from the dais.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Dr. Prince. At this time, I'd like to invite a special guest, Doug Demaree from Hurf Jones, to the podium, who will present our Teacher of the Year, Lindsay Loreno, with her commemorative ring.
Well, thank you. Good evening, thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Prince. We at Hurf Jones are lucky enough to work with about every graduate at St. Lucie County, and we are lucky enough to do a lot of prestigious awards. We've done the Heisman Trophy, and World Series rings, Super Bowl rings, the Congressional Medal of Honor, but there's nothing more we'd like to do is to recognize teachers. My, all my in-laws are basically in education, my dad was a coach, my brother's a teacher, so this is really, really important to us. So we look forward to presenting this ring as her Super Bowl ring, and I'll explain it real quick. On the top of the ring, it has an apple for education, and it has Teacher of the Year, and then around the side, it has the year date in St. Lucie County, and then inside it has her name inside of it. So thank you for allowing us to be a part of St. Lucie County Education, it's a big honor for us at Hurf Jones, and we look forward to continue doing what we're supposed to do. Thank you, guys, very much.
Congratulations, Lindsay. At this time, we're going to move forward with recognizing our students who, as middle schoolers, received a perfect score on one or more end-of-the-year state tests. At this time, I'd like to invite the principals of the schools listed on this slide to come forward and retrieve your certificates from Ms. Barber. Students, we will call your name, you will meet your principal, who will give you your certificate, and you'll shake hands of the board members. And once you do that, you'll gather over here on the risers for a group photo. So Ms. Rodriguez, Ms. Whitaker, Ms. Bobo, Mr. Gardner, and Dr. Harrington. Okay, we will start with Alapata Flats. First, we have Michaela Bama, perfect score, civics, EOC. Cedar Baderena, grade 6, fast math. Escobar Jones, grade 6, reading. Jason Jean Louis, grade 8, math. Avery O'Brien, grade 8, math. Annabella Sanchez, grade 7, reading, and grade 8, math. Next, moving on to the Creative Arts Academy, we have Ashley Simmons, grade 6, math. From Forest Grove Middle School, we have Alyssa Carroll, grade 8, math. And William Husey, grade 8, science. From Fort Pierce Central High School, Denise Valdez, grade 8, math. From Lincoln Park Academy, Valentina Aguilera, grade 8, math. Christian Arias, grade 8, math. Avalon Brewer, grade 7, reading. Reyna Cooper, grade 7, reading. Christine Gergely, grade 8, reading. Mikhail Horton, grade 8, science. Jonathan Lelain, reading. William Lee, algebra. And Brayden Myers, grade 8, math. And if we could have the board members join the students, along with the principals, for a photo. All right, congratulations. We will move on to our next group. If we could have the principals of the schools on the screen come forward to retrieve your certificates. All right, and we will start with Manatee Academy. We have Annabelle Lopez, grade 8, reading. Riley Ortega, grade 6, math. Matthew Serrato, civics. Mosaic Digital Academy, Zainab Malik, grade 8, math. Northport K8, Hazen Balfour, grade 6, reading, and grade 8, math. Alec Bentoncourt, grade 8, science. Peyton Levin, 7th grade, civics. And from Oak Hammock, Remy De Rougemont, civics. Students from Palm Point, Jonathan Bonia, grade 7, civics. Logan Farre, grade 7, civics. Raphael Francois, grade 7, civics and algebra, EOC. Rudolph Goldman, grade 6, math. Parker Lehman, grade 7, reading, and grade 8, math. Jai Michael Ricketts, grade 8, science. Elliot Shoby, grade 7, civics. Amelia Sides, grade 7, reading. Jasmine Spence, grade 8, math. And Esther Silvan, grade 8, math. Congratulations to this exceptional group of students. We will have We will have board members and principals come over for the photo. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. What, sorry. We need, looks like we need one more photo. Congratulations. And we have one more fantastic group of middle school students. If the principals of the schools on the slide would come forward for your certificates. All right, and we will be starting with Sam Gaines Academy. And we have Nathan Morningstar civics. From Southport Middle School, we have Logan McDonald, grade eight, math. Jordan Slider, grade eight, science. St. Lucie West K-8, Jawah Anderson, grade eight, science. Aiden Shigani, grade eight, reading and science. Micah Crutchley, grade eight, science. Finian Emery, grade eight, math. Keith Grant, seventh grade civics. Amelies Hernandez, grade eight, math. Landon Kohler, grade eight, reading and science. Quentin Moxie Jr., civics, EOC. Jackson Raber, grade eight, math. Liam Valenzuela, grade eight, math. Caleb Werner, seventh grade civics. And Amelia Wise, seventh grade civics. From Westgate K-8, we have Menji Chen, grade eight, math. Robert Kiernan, grade seven civics. And Kai O'Brien, seventh grade civics. Congratulations once again to this exceptional group of students. And once again, we'll have the board members and principals join in for the photo. All right, congratulations once again. And just want to stress, these students not only received the highest score of a five, they received perfect scores, not one question wrong on these tests. And that is an absolutely incredible achievement, and many of them did it on more than one test. So congratulations to these awesome students. And I want to recognize the parents in the audience. If you would stand to be recognized. And students, if you could give your parents a round of applause as well. Okay, at this time, I would like to invite Esther Rivera, Director of Student Services, to the podium, who will provide recognition for both school attendance and some PBIS awards.
Good evening, Chairwoman Dr. Mills, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. Today is a night of celebration. As we say, congratulations to all our students. We are also congratulating our schools. Good evening, Chairwoman Dr. Mills, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. Today is a night of celebration, as you can see, by the amazing students and their work today. We would like to also recognize some of our schools and their principals for their hard work. We will start with Aim for 100. Aim for 100 is a district-wide initiative where school attendance teams help create and implement interventions to help increase student attendance. These school teams are working diligently in ensuring students are attending school every day by creating partnerships between schools and families and acknowledging students' dedication to coming to school each and every day. During the first quarter of this year, 16 schools have earned a daily attendance rate of 94% or higher. Additionally, nine schools earned a daily attendance rate of 93.5% or higher. We will start with our honorable mention schools. Principals, as I call your schools' names, please come up, you and your teams, if you would like to bring them up, so that you may be recognized. First, we have St. Lucie Elementary, Northport K-8, Alapata Flats K-8, Manatee K-8, Floresta Elementary, Village Green Elementary, Chagikos High School, Southport Middle, and Savannah Ridge Elementary. Principals, will you and your teams please come up to be recognized? Thank you. The following schools will be recognized for earning Bronze Status, and then we will recognize Silver Status, 94, over 94% attendance rate. Sam Gaines Academy of Emerging Technologies and Chester A. Moore Elementary School. Earning Silver Status, we have Rivers Edge Elementary, Westgate K-8, Francis K. Sweet Elementary, Oak Hammock K-8, Mariposa Elementary, Bay Shore Elementary, Whimmel Point Elementary. The following list of schools have earned Gold and Platinum Status with a staggering over 95% of their students come to school every single day. The schools are Creative Arts Academy, St. Lucie West K-8, Morningside Elementary, Lincoln Park Academy, Forest Grove Middle, Fair Lawn Elementary, and Palm Point K-8. Principals, can you and your teams please come forth? Board members, please don't go anywhere yet. We have a little bit more recognition. St. Lucie Public Schools utilizes positive behavior interventions and support, known as PBIS, which is an evidence-based framework to improve and integrate data, systems, and practices affecting students' outcomes every day. Schools nationwide are recognized as model schools for successfully implementing the PBIS framework. The following schools earn Model School status for PBIS for 2024. School principals, when I call your schools up, please come so we can congratulate you. Fair Lawn, earning Bronze Status. Floresta, earning Bronze Status. Mosaic Digital Academy, earning Silver Status. Somerset Academy St. Lucie, earning Silver Status. White City Elementary, earning Silver Status. And Palm Point, earning Platinum Status. Congratulations.
All right, congratulations. Next, we would like to recognize Anna Paige Cruz, a senior at Fort Pierce Westwood, who placed second in the United States for her extemporaneous public speaking that she recently did at an FFA event. She can come forward. I want to give you just a little bit of background about this, and then I am going to play a very short part of her speech. During this event, participants draw from 18 agricultural topics, then select three of interest. From those three, a student selects the topic for their speech. Has only 30 minutes to prepare using five resources. Participants then present a four-to-six-minute speech on their topic to a panel of judges. After their speech, students answer five minutes' worth of questions on the topic they just presented. This event challenges students to practice their presentation skills, articulation, and logical thinking, and advocate for agriculture and agricultural education. The topic of Paige's speech was, "The age of the average farmer is increasing, and the number of subsequent generations interested in coming back to the farm is decreasing. How can we bridge the gap between generations to keep the farming and ranching community thriving instead of surviving?" And this is a short excerpt from her speech.
Many agriculturists are left wondering, what are they going to do with their farm? With such an essential industry, we must continue to empower the next generation to step up and continue to produce those agriculture goods for every consumer. Because without them, we would be homeless, have no clothes, and would be really hungry. That being said, the average age of the American- That being said, the average age of the American farmer is 58 years old, according to the U.S. Census. This is a 9.5 age-year gap since the year 1945. And the age is only increasing, as the younger generations are not chasing any agriculture careers. In fact, with 3.4 million producers across the United States, only 300,000 of those are under the age of 40. No, I'm not calling any of y'all old, but it's still older than the age that we'd like to see pursuing a career in agriculture. The younger generation is simply intimidated by the industry if they don't come from it. Land prices, equipment, fertilizers, or simply the task at hand, what do they do? We, as the older generation or individuals that come from this industry, have to do a better job at empowering that next generation, taking them under our wing, and teaching them those practices, because agriculture is the most essential industry of all.
Wow, congratulations. And I just would like to point out, she didn't have any note cards. There was no teleprompter. She did that with 30 minutes' preparation, and she made us all very proud. Congratulations. All right, thank you so much. At this time, we're moving on to our final Special Orders of Business, and that is to recognize two special individuals for our Star Award. Tammy Brown and Teresa Calvo, Oak Hammock and Westgate K-8. They are both Behavior Intervention Classroom Monitors. They can come forward. The Star Award is given to these two individuals in recognition of their exceptional performance as the Behavior Intervention Classroom Monitors. Both have demonstrated outstanding dedication, going above and beyond to foster a positive and supportive environment. They have implemented effective behavior interventions that have enhanced student academic and behavioral outcomes, and provide training to others at other sites. So congratulations to Tammy and Teresa for being such a valuable member of our St. Lucy Public Schools team. All right, congratulations. And that concludes our Special Orders of Business for this evening.
Wow, this has been an incredible night. We're gonna go right into our easel report. Nope, I think Mr. David Freeman is not here this evening. Do we have a representative? Okay, so now CWA. I don't see Ms. Vickers. Is there anyone else from CWA that'd like to give a report? Okay, you're not out there, so we'll move right along. To our consent agenda. We want to do the adoption of the consent agenda. There is a motion that's needed and a second to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Ingersoll, second by Ms. Hawley. Superintendent, may we have your recommendation?
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda submitted.
Superintendent has recommended that we approve the consent agenda items that have been submitted. So move Mr. Ingersoll.
Second.
Second, Ms. Arison. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, oh, before we do that, do we want to remove any items for discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's move forward with the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, informational reports is next on the agenda. Board Members, you have the reports in front of you. Charter Schools' financial statements are presented to the board for information purposes only. No approval of a charter school financial statement is required. So just take your time and look over those reports. And then we're gonna go straight to superintendent and staff reports on selected topics.
Just a couple of comments, Madam Chair. First of all, next week starts our Thanksgiving holiday. Many folks are gonna be on the road traveling. I have a lot of fond memories of Thanksgiving with my family, actually. I'll be traveling as well with a few of my children to see my siblings and also my mother. But I would just let everybody know to please drive and travel safely, however you're traveling, and get to your destination and then return back safely. I also wanted to make a couple of comments about being thankful. I want to congratulate again Mrs. Richardson for her reelection, and also congratulations again to our new board member, Mrs. Teresa Aronson. I'm very thankful and grateful for the board that I have to work with. We have accomplished some great things, but we haven't reached that destination yet. It's always a work in progress. And I also wanted to say, I'm very, very grateful for my leadership team, the people that I'm so lucky to surround myself with, that do a great job each and every day, my senior cabinet. But the most important people are the folks in the school centers. I want to thank our principals, our teachers, our bus drivers, our maintenance folks, all the people that really make things go. Many of the public don't know what it takes to run our schools each and every day when things go wrong, and we've got maintenance people out in our buildings at 3:00 a.m. And the food service folks there early to cook breakfast for our children, our support staffs that greet our kids, the teachers that are teaching in the classrooms, all of these people. When they say it takes a village, it truly does take a village. So I'm very grateful and thankful. I'm looking forward to working with our new board member and also our existing board members. And I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Attorney's report. Attorney Cole, do you have anything you would like to say this evening?
No report.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Cole. We'll go right into action items. We have board members up, reports, but we're gonna do action items first. 22.1. And this is going to be an item that will be open for public comment. We have a conference that's coming up, FSBA. It's their 79th Conference Annual Joint Conference. It will be on December 3rd, and will go through to December 6th in Tampa, Florida. Ms. Hawley and Ms. Arison is going to be going for official school business. And with that said, the said travel does comply with the rules of the State Board of Education. At this time, do we have any public comment that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we're going to close the public comments, and we may have a motion and a second.
So moved.
So move Mr. Ingersoll.
Who said second?
Okay, second, Ms. Richardson. Any discussions? Okay, all in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We do have another action item here. It is the Proposed Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards 2025 Legislation Program. It's an addendum item, and I need a motion and a second to accept and approve the proposed 2025 legislation program.
So moved.
So move Mr. Ingersoll.
Second.
Second, Ms. Arison. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. This time, we'll get our members' reports. We're gonna start with Mr. Ingersoll.
Yes, ma'am, it's just been a great month, and I've had the opportunity to be a part of some incredible stuff. Chardonnay High School, I want to thank them for a great play. It was excellently done. Unfortunately, I forgot it was the same night as the Education Foundation. So guess I'm getting older in my times. I paid for both of them, though. Cobra, Fort Pierce Central had a PBIS day, and it was probably one of the best days I've had out of high school. And just seeing all the students out there and participating was a great day. And then middle school volleyball tournament, and congratulations to Palm Point Rockets, they won this weekend. I just, every time I think my volleyball season's over, my four hours of volunteer service a day of coaching is over, and then every week, something else happens. So I think this is my last volleyball event of the year. So I think I'm finally done.
Okay, Mr. Ingersoll, Ms. Hawley. Ms. Arison.
I want to thank you all for the warm welcome. I'm honored to be serving this board, this community, and the residents of St. Lucy County. And just a couple of things to share with all of you. Young Floridian has kicked off, and it's got a longstanding history here in St. Lucy County. And thank you to all of you for encouraging the high schools here to work with the St. Lucy County Chamber of Commerce on continuing that great scholarship program. And thank you to all the coordinators that help us gather those students to apply for that scholarship, and the Children's Services Council for sponsoring it every single year. I was able to head out to Big Apple Pizza for CA Moore's Night of Learn to Read, and I'll continue to try to get out for some more of those, and honored to do that as well. So thank you all so much, and thank you to all my supporters that showed up tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Arison. Ms. Arison, Ms. Richardson.
It's been a very long night, so I'm gonna try to be short. But Superintendent, I just had a question. For the turkey dinner that we're having luncheon, everybody is sitting together for lunch, right? Including our maintenance staff? Everybody?
Not sure. Yep.
Okay, just making sure that we are one big family sitting together. So thank you for that. Also, I wanted to just again say thank you, and to Steve and Doug and the editors who did the Legacy and the Westwood videos. They were amazing. I mean, I thought I was in the movies, I think Legacy. Yeah, I'm sorry, at Westwood. I thought I was in the movies. I think they did an excellent job. So thank you so very much for a job well done. And you know, that's it for me. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Richardson, on your reelection.
Thank you, Dr. Mills.
Congratulations, Ms. Arison, for your election.
Thank you, Dr. Mills.
Successful campaigns. Principal Smith and Alfonso, thank you so much for your presentation. It was very well done, and we appreciate that. And of course, congratulations again to those students that made the perfect score. Perfect score. We appreciate your hard work as well. At this time, we just thank everyone for being here, and we pray that you have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Celebrate with your family and your friends, and let's all be thankful for that that we have, whatever it might be. Thankful for what we have, not what we don't have, but what we have. And we appreciate each and every one of you. A really special thanks to our staff, our administration, and our principals as well, and the local schools. Thank you so much for all that you do. As well as bus drivers, we're thankful for all of you. We're thankful for our support staff, every last one of you, wherever you are, whatever you do. We are thankful for that. I had the opportunity to go with the Ed Foundation this past week to several of the different schools, as we honored our support staff and principals as well. So we're looking forward to having our week off. I'm looking forward to it, okay? We are, oh, there is no special, there's no unscheduled special speakers tonight, so we're adjourned.